Calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, March 11th, 2020. Do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a litigation matter?
Motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Meeting is adjourned until 6 o'clock. We are reconvening into regular session after an exec. Would you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We are committed to an academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Questions and comments?
No.
From interested citizens, any updates, Elsie, from the past?
We haven't had any. No, nope.
It's a simple yes or no.
It's a no.
Discussion of the 2021 non-instructional budget items.
Wow, that was fast. Okay.
Patrick Cahill. By the way, Dan Esroti has another obligation and can't make it. The first Board of Ed meeting in six years, Mr. Esroti has missed. He gets a gold star on the nonexistent chart.
So I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing us to present to you this evening. We're going to be discussing the 2020-21 general fund budget, and more specifically, we will be talking about the property tax cap, state aid as it stands right now, and the non-instructional portion of the budget. We, in the past, kind of called this Book One. So the non-instructional budget would be transportation, buildings and grounds, central office, security, would be data processing and computer-assisted instruction, so there's instructional component to it, and library media as well. So let's start off by talking about the tax cap. So most of us are very familiar with this. The tax cap is a limit on the increase in the levy, the annual levy, tax levy, and the tax cap is a multi-step formula. It's like eight steps. And the 2% tax cap, the 2% really deals with the levy growth factor. So it's one factor or component in the computation of the formula. And really, when we talk about the tax cap, we're talking about the maximum allowable levy. That's sort of the bottom line number in the tax cap. And the way the cap works for the levy growth factor, it's either 2% or the CPI, Consumer Price Index, the rate of inflation, whichever is less. So for next year, the 2%, the 2% tax cap is actually 1.81%. So it's below 2%, which is a little tough, gives us less room to operate in the budget. Last year it was 2%. It's kind of been hovering around 2. Prior to that, it was below, below 2%. We had an advantage three, four years ago, where one of the factors in the tax cap computation is a tax-based growth factor, which I'll get to in a moment. So for Monroe Woodbury, for at least two years, that was well above the Orange County average, and that tax-based growth factor captures literally new construction in the school districts, that kind of thing. It's a mechanism to be able to tax something that's new. And so that actually made the maximum allowable levy for us reasonable, or gave us a reasonable increase on the levy. So unfortunately for this year, with the levy growth factor at 1.8, and I'm going to go through the computation of it, our maximum allowable levy is just a hair above 2%, which is relatively low. It's the lowest that it's been in, I would say, you know, at least four or five years, probably. So it, like I said, doesn't give us a lot of room to work with in our budget. The problem with the tax cap, and we've talked about this many times, is there's many costs within our budget that are outside of our control and exceed 2% or, in this case, 1.8%. I put a couple up here. I said health insurance. Fortunately for next year, we're going to talk more about that in an upcoming meeting. Fortunately for us, it's only about 2% premium increase this year, but it's still, 2% is more than 1.8%. And in general, there's been years, if you recall, where the premium increase was 7%, 18%, and we still had to live with the, a tax cap of, air quoting, 2%, often, you know, less than 2 or slightly above 2. It's rarely ever exactly 2. The other example, there's many examples in the budget of costs that exceed 2%, is our employer contribution to the pension fund, New York State Pension. So the TRS rate, Teacher Retirement System rate, is about 8.1, I'll say 8.86% for this year. For next year, it's projected to be about 9.5%. So that's like a 7.65% increase. Again, something that's outside our control, entirely outside of our control, well over the tax cap, but, you know, we still have to sort of operate within this system. And as you know, the tax cap is now permanent. It was, it had a sunset clause, but it was made permanent, so we have all adapted to it, and we'll have to continue to adapt to it. So here's the actual computation of the maximum allowable levy, and I won't grind through all of this, but basically, we begin with the prior year levy. In this case, it's this year's levy, the prior year tax levy. We apply, I mentioned this, the tax-based growth factor. It's about half of 1%, so in our case, it's a factor, so it's 1.0053. So it's 0.53%. Last year, I just had that on there. It was relatively low as well, but a little bit higher. And you do some things with pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes here. We add them in, and then we have to subtract. For school districts, there's something called exclusions or exemptions, so it's basically expenses, it's a capital expense typically, net of state aid, that we're able to go through the formula and then add back into our levy. So as part of the formula, you have to deduct last year's exclusions, and you have an adjusted prior year levy, and that's when you apply the 2%, which in this case, for this year, is 1.81% to the adjusted prior year levy. You deduct the upcoming pilots, and this sort of hurt us a little bit too, that next year's pilots are a little bit more than the current year pilots. So the current year pilots are an add-back, next year's pilots are deduction, so that sort of hurt us a little bit. And then you add back in your exemptions, your exclusions. So in our case, it's debt service, so we've borrowed money, we've issued serial bonds, and for capital construction projects, and it's, so that debt service is a capital expense, but it's net of state aid. So if we receive building aid on those projects, we would deduct that. And it's actually fairly complex to figure out the state aid and the actual exclusion. But again, in this case, the deduction, last year's exclusion was greater than this year's, so that hurt us too as far as the maximum allowable levy. So when we get to the bottom line here, we started with the current year tax levy of And so for next year, the maximum allowable levy is $125,420,000, which is about $2.5 million increase, or 2.07%. So it's relatively low increase. The current year's increase, last year at this time, was about 2.6%. Other years, the year before that, it was a bit higher than that. So it's going to be, you know, make it more challenging to operate within this budget. We're not, we're not done, obviously, with everything. This is our first meeting, so more to follow on that. Any questions? I know that was sort of a lot to go through. So let's talk about state aid for a little while. So I've talked about this before. The state aid process basically starts with the New York State Board of Education, the Board of Regents, which is the governing body of the state ed department, and they release their proposal for state aid, and it's typically fairly generous. In past years, they've asked for a full phase-in of foundation aid. We've talked about that, how beneficial that would be for Monroe Woodbury. It doesn't look like that's in the cards anymore. So for next year, the Board of Regents proposed a state aid increase of about $2 billion. So they were recommending we go from $27.7 billion to $29.7 billion. State aid to education is a very large piece of the state budget. You know, it's Medicaid, it's state aid to education. They released their proposal on December 9th. It generally reflects the Board of Regents' program priorities, so they are emphasizing educational equity, early learning, and English language learners. So it's a conceptual kind of recommendation. There's no district-by-district aid projections like we get with the governor's proposal. So the way it typically goes is the Board of Regents shoots high, the governor comes in with the state budget sometime after January 1st, I think it was around January 6th, maybe this year. So his proposal was for an $825 million increase. He also recommended certain changes to state aid, to the formula for state aid, and I'll just kind of briefly touch on the big ones. So he's recommending we eliminate 10 expense-based aids and roll that into foundation aid. So on the face of it, you may say, "Well, that's probably not so bad." I looked at it, and I said, "It's going to make things a little less complex, because state aid is very complex." And I almost understand why he would want to do that, because it makes the state be able to project what these are, what the aid is going to be more easily, makes things a little clearer, a little simpler. But the problem is it decouples the expense that we would incur. It's mostly these expense-based aids where if we spend money this year, say we spend a dollar this year, we might receive 70 cents next year as transportation aid, for instance. So what we have with that is it's a sharing mechanism, where the state is sharing with the local school district in the cost of operating the district. So doing away with some of these expense-based aids, BOSI's was a big one, instructional materials aids were some of the aids, it sort of decouples that. And I think at the end of the day, it would be detrimental to Monroe Woodbury and detrimental to most school districts. So I think in general, school districts have opposed that change to state aid. He also proposed changes to building aid and transportation aid. So those are two expense-based aids that he is not proposing to roll into foundation aid, but he is trying to change them so that would be less money to local school districts. With building aid, he's talking about changing the building aid ratio, the percentage that we receive back for capital expenses. And he's also talking about making certain site-related incidental work no longer eligible, ineligible for building aid. So for Monroe Woodbury, the recent capital project that we did for the turf fields and the HVAC work at the high school, that would probably cost us, would jeopardize us about $5 million in building aid, if this proposal were come to pass. So again, school districts, for the most part, are opposing this change. The other thing he's proposing is a cap on transportation aid to be the greater of Consumer Price Index inflation or CPI plus enrollment growth. So again, that would, you know, limit what we'd be getting back in transportation aid. And again, it's, you know, it's a way to sort of tamp down on the expenses at the state level, but it's detrimental to school districts, and we've talked about this in the past, you know, what the state passes down to the local school district, the local taxpayer has to pick up through the tax levy, and we now have a tax cap, so we're restricted in what we can do there. So here's a little cartoon I threw up here. It says the new school funding formula, and then the, there's this math equation, this huge equation, and he says, "It's simple, really." I mean, that's how I feel about state aid. Sometimes you go to these workshops, and it's a room full of business officials, and it feels like everyone is, when you walk out, your eyes are spinning, because it's so complex. And even the experts that run the workshops, we, or the services we buy from BOSI's, it's called Questar 3 BOSI State Aid and Financial Planning, even they, I mean, when I call them, about 50% of the time, I can stump them, you know, and I laugh. I say, "There's about 10 people in the whole world that really understand this, and they're at SED, and they don't pick up the phone or help you readily." You know, so I almost understand why the governor was trying to make this system a little bit simpler. But, you know, nonetheless, if it's not good for us, we're going to oppose his proposed changes. So here are the actual numbers based on the governor's budget the state aid runs, the projection for 2021 budget, and this is the, this is our budget, our 1920 budget number, and I will, I will cut rate to the chase here. So we're looking at about a $1.29 million increase, budget-to-budget increase, and there's certain, you know, these are the aid, major aid programs, foundation aid, BOSI's aid. So there's nothing here, because under the governor's proposal for next year, there wouldn't be any BOSI's aid anymore. It would be part of foundation aid, and that's why foundation aid here is so much higher, because he's rolled some of these aid programs into that. So it's about a 2.4% increase, not a great increase. We've talked about how this generally operates. The Board of Regents is high, the governor is low. Hopefully, they'll meet in the middle somewhere, but the state has a fairly significant budget deficit they're dealing with, so it could be a slightly different fiscal landscape going forward. The other thing I just wanted to point out here is, we often see these articles in the newspaper, talks about state aid runs for school districts, and what they generally pick up is the governor's reports. And there's a difference here between what we budgeted and what we're actually going to be receiving for this year. And so what we always do is compare our budget to budget, and if there's any variation between what we budgeted, which is this number, $53.4 million, and what we think we're going to be receiving this year, that goes to fund balance. So for this year, we actually budgeted a slightly higher number than what it looks like we'll be receiving in state aid, so that would affect our surplus or fund balance at the end of the year. So sometimes it's positive, you're going to collect more revenue than you would budgeted. In this case, for state aid anyways, it looks like we're going to get a little bit less than we thought. Because again, these projections are not set in stone. They're based on what we think we're going to spend at the beginning of a year, and when we're submitting these financial data through the state aid management system, SANS, you've heard me maybe mention that in the ST3, you know, so it's complex, it's tricky, and it's subject to change in a lot of instances. So here is the budget triangle. I brought it back for Dr. Hassler, mostly, because he enjoys this so much.
I love it.
It's the visual, helps him understand it.
It's true.
So what this is supposed to be depicting is sort of a balanced budget. And so on one side, we have our revenue, our income. The other side, we have our appropriations, our expenditures. The sides are equal, and based on that, the base of the triangle is our instructional program. So what I wanted to show here is that with our state aid increase of about $1.3 million, our tax cap, maximum allowable levy increase of about 2.5, we only have $3.8 million to work with for next year's budget. You know, the other variable here, there's a couple of variables, actually. We can use the signed fund balance, so that's taking some of our fund balance, and we do that every year. We apply a certain amount of fund balance to the upcoming budget to lower the tax rate. We'll do that again next year. We can look to reserves as a revenue source, and we've done that, to balance the budget, to have this equilibrium. And the other thing you do in extreme cases is you'd make cuts in appropriations, so that would be cutting the budget. So if we're in really bad shape, that's the kind of thing school districts have to do, the tough decisions to change programs and cut programs. We're not there, but this is a tight year. That's all I'll say with the state aid as it stands and the tax cap at 2%, I'll call Okay, so we're moving to actual appropriations and budgets here. So I'm going to talk about very, very quickly, central administration. So we start out with the Board of Education, and this is literally the reports that you've received in board docs. And there's really a very minimal increase for most of these budget lines. We begin here with function code 1010, that's Board of Education. 1040 is District Clerk, and 1060 is District Meetings, which is just basically the Board, the Budget Vote Day and Board Elections. So there's a very minimal increase here, about $950. You know, an immaterial increase here of $200, and then a small decrease under District Meetings. You know, the only thing of any significance here would be, we increased the Board of Education conferences and meetings, but there was a decrease here in miscellaneous expense and in board supplies. So the net increase is rather small. I would call it insignificant. So here, we're into the Superintendent and Business Office. The Chief School Administrator is function code 1240, and Business Office is 1310, 1320, 1330, and 1380. And I circled a code here, there's one significant code where something's happening, under the superintendent's budget area, functional area. The consultant line has increased from 0 to $48,000. And I don't know if you want to address that, Elsie?
Yeah, I do. Thank you for circling in a big red.
We can't miss it that way.
You can't miss it. So one of the things that I had mentioned probably about a year ago was that Eric, Dr. Hassler and I were part of a, something called the Tri-State Consortium. We were on a one-year, what's the word I want to use, Eric? Trial basis, you know, decide whether we think that that's something that's positive for the school district. We have done this for a year, and we feel that this would be very beneficial to our staff, to our students, to really find out what's best practices in our district. So we have decided that we are now going to apply, but by applying, there is a fee. I'm not sure if it's between $20,000 or $25,000, but I do believe it's well worth it, because what happens is, is you have a group of educators who come into your district, and you have them give you feedback on how you're doing something. And they talk about best practices, and I really believe that that's going to benefit not only our teachers and our staff, but our students, right? Because ultimately, it's what's the best practices for our students. So that's one piece. The other organization that I'm contemplating, and that's why we put it on the budget, is an organization called EAB. I had been asked to be part of this group three years ago, where they sat down and spoke to several superintendents and talked about what are the burning issues nationally. And what they do is they do some great research, so they have a research team. So if I were to contact them and say, "Look, I'm having, I'm going to give you an example. We have some concerns about disruptive children. What is the national standard? What are people doing?" They would give us that information. I have not met with them, but I felt that at this time, since we were doing the budget, that I would put that in as well. I will certainly keep the board and the community aware. So those two items are a possibility. I have to be accepted by the Tri-State Consortium, and I have to agree to EAB, but I felt that it would be prudent to speak to the board and to the community about the possibility of doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Elsie. So the other, the other codes that I circled in red are under Business Administration, 1310, and so we also have, you know, a somewhat significant increase in our consultant line. We increased that line to allow us to participate with something called Education Data, which is a procurement service. And I've talked about it before, because we are participating, but we had not budgeted the money here in the business office under consultants. So what this service does is they go out and basically, we have to abide by general municipal law regarding procurements. We have to do a bid if the items we're buying, commodities are over $20,000. It's a very prescribed process. If it's a capital project over $35,000, we have to go out to bid. We have to use RFPs for professional services. So there's all these rules, and it slows things down. It can be, it can be time-consuming, it can be expensive, we have to do advertisements and things. So this is a service where, this is a group that will do all that for you, they work with hundreds of school districts, and it's sort of like we're not all reinventing, you know, we're not reinventing, we're all doing, duplicating the same kind of thing and doing the same thing over. They will go out and do it, they do it for services as well. So it's, I think it's worthwhile to participate in that. That's why that consultant line is up by 16,000, by up so much. The other line here is BOSI's admin services, and that's an increase of about 20,000. So that's basically five services that the business office buys from BOSI's. And so I mentioned, one of the services is through Questar 3 BOSI's, State Aid and Financial Planning. It's relatively, you know, small money, $3,000 or $4,000. We also participate in a cooperative purchasing with Orange Oster BOSI's, and that's budgeted in that line. We have, and this is one of the changes, we're buying Forecast 5 Analytics, which is a piece of software through BOSI's, and we get BOSI's aid for that, and it's a benchmarking software, it's an analytical piece of software that we're buying and we're budgeting here. Let's see, we're also charging workers' comp administrative charges, about 13,000 to that code. I think in the past, that was charged in the benefits section of the budget. And there's GASB 75 Services through BOSI's, which is the OPEB, the Other Post-Employment Benefit Computation, that we have to do in our financial statements. It's the cost of health insurance for retirees, that service is part of that. So the increase is attributable to the workers' comp and the Forecast 5 Analytics, really. Otherwise, auditing, 65,000, no change there. That's for external audit, that's for internal auditor. And actually, I think we replaced, you may have looked at your report, that number was 52,500, and we did a final look at the budget, realized that that should not have been reduced, and we moved that back to 65,000. So if you had looked at your reports, say, over the weekend, that number was a little lower, but I think we sent you, or we uploaded to board docs the most accurate report. In tax collection, you know, we collect our own taxes, not every district does that. Many districts rely on the local tax collector, no change there. And fiscal agent fees, those are the fees we pay to our fiscal advisor for continuing disclosure reports, because we have serial bonds that are out in the public marketplace, so we have an obligation to do a continuing disclosure. It's sort of an overview of our finances, the condition of the district annually, and we also have money there if we need their services to issue new serial bonds, which we're in the process of doing right now with our refinancing and issuing of debt for the field. So that's what that money is there for.
I have a question about the BOSI's services. So you mentioned about state aid and stuff like that. Is there a service that is provided, or is there some sort of document that goes out and lets you know what grants are available for, like, for special needs or something like that?
Through BOSI's?
Through anything.
Okay.
Any service. You're talking about these different services. Are there any services? I know that we should be applying for different grants, but is there a place that kind of gives you, like, some kind of list that these are available grants you should, you know, apply to?
I think there are services like that, and I think typically what they do is they will say, "We will help you identify grants that, you know, you may be eligible for, will help you with the application process," but there's a fee associated with it, obviously, and they would have a portion of that or charge you a fee.
So how do we know what's available out there?
As far as I know, Lorraine, there's no BOSI service that does that, like Grant Writer or Grant Finder, something like that.
There isn't.
It's not a bad It's not a bad idea, you know, that...
There's so much stuff out there that, you know, if you don't know it, you don't know it. So who knows?
Can I just jump into that? I think one of the bigger challenges that we have as a school district is that we don't fit the profile.
I know what you're saying. We're not a, it's what, a lower income, need-based? But you do have special needs that may have...
We do, but they take a look at the free and reduced, and they use that formula to determine if you're, I mean, there are things that are out there for multiple things, and I get copies of it, you know? I get it. So you're asking, "Do I know?" I do. I get an email that says, "Here are the things that are available," and then when you go to the requirements...
It says it.
We don't need the requirements. So that's really where we are at.
Because I know there was a point where we were trying to promote, you know, if you are entitled to, for, you know, lunch.
Yeah, the consultants that look for, the consultants that will help you look at which grants, they usually start by looking at your free and reduced, and before they see ours, they're excited to talk to us, and when they see what ours are, they're like, "Yeah, we don't think so." But if you were Newburgh or Middletown?
Absolutely.
Really interesting.
Yeah, we had a consultant firm that met with me a couple of years ago, and then said, you know, "We look at your profile, and you're really not entitled to much," which is a shame, right? Because it's sort of, in my opinion, it's not fair.
It's not fair, because we have, what, a fifth of the percentage have, we have special, whatever the need is, right? It may not be a monetary need, but they don't even look at the profile.
No, they don't. They look at your free and reduced, that's really the driving, yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Way below the percentage.
Correct. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, moving on. So here's the, sort of the catch-all, legal personnel, public information, insurance, and BOSI's admin and capital. And really, there's not a lot happening here. There's no change to the legal. The legal, we have three codes there. I just put the total up. It'd be Board of Education legal, Special Education legal, and Personnel legal. There's three actual budget codes that roll up into this function code 1420 for Legal, so we didn't increase that. We've been slowly decreasing the legal budget line. I think, you know, we'll be fine where we are, 245,000. There's no increase to the Personnel section of the budget, which is function code 1430. 1480 is Public Information Services, there's a small decrease there, 7,000. It's due to the BOSI's line here, Public Information for BOSI's. I think we're using them a little bit less for certain services, decreased that line. And then finally, here at the bottom, Insurance, Tax Refunds, BOSI's Admin Capital. It's any budget code that begins with a 1919, sort of a catch-all. And again, most of these, there is no increase. Percentage increase here is a small increase, but what I circled down at the bottom was the BOSI's Admin and Capital expense. So that's sort of a fixed cost that's allocated to school districts based on their size, and I think it's in ARWADA, their participation in BOSI's. And, you know, it's a big number for the admin, it's almost $1,000,958,000 that we pay to BOSI's, just for their, sort of their overhead and the capital expenses related to, you know, the expense of construction, capital projects. But for next year, it's a relatively modest increase, so it's 1.49% and half a percent on the capital. So I just wanted to point that out. Other years, for whatever reason, it's been much higher, but next year, it's a relatively small increase. And that's all I have. Any questions?
My biggest question is going back to when we find out officially about the governor's proposal for the state aid, and have we thought about a plan if we do not, if it passes and we do not get that money back that we were projecting for the field?
Well, what it would be, that's a good, I should have pointed that out, it's a great question, Elsie. It would be prospective, meaning projects that are approved after July 1, 2020 would be impacted. So we'd be impacted if we decided to do another field project like that, and we would be impacted, I think, based on other projects we would do, but that would not be affected. And that's generally the way the state aid works. Like, there's, they call it builds. There's four different types of building aid you can get, and it depends on when you did the capital project. I mean, these are the things that make it so confusing. So when the, 25 years ago, the rules were X, like our high school were getting building aid based on like a build four, and then it's a build three, and it's whatever the rules were at the time, that's how it goes forward. They don't ding you, you know, on a project that is already done and in the pipeline. They ding you prospectively.
For future.
Yeah, yeah. So it's still, I mean, that would be far worse. It's still not good if that happens, but it wouldn't impact us on that one. Okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
I'm going to pass this over to Peter, who is going to give us an overview for buildings and grounds.
Hi, and good evening. First off, I'd like to start by thanking Andre, my assistant Andre Ludiak, and my maintenance and grounds and building staff for keeping the buildings clean and safe, especially in this time right now. There wasn't much winter, but this has made up for it. So I'd like to go right into doing our project here. Budget goals for 2021, maintain the capital investment in district facilities such as Boilermakers Asphalt Fields, continue to maintain high level of cleanliness and maintenance, replacement of maintenance equipment, and continue to conserve energy and minimize district cost operating. Renovation projects that we have done and will finish up 1920. High school lecture hall, replacement of carpet and chairs. The high school gym, we finished the whole floor. Pine Tree Library, and we just added another piece to it, and that's all done there. And Smith Clover over the April break will have, Smith Clover's been done, the exhaust fans, and North Main's library, bandroom will be done over the spring break. Operations and maintenance costs, somewhere for 2021. Using better equipment and getting a better handle on expenses, we have come in with a 1.82 increase in budget. That being said, there's two items, budget items, that have really increased. One was the operation, maintenance, rental maintenance in 422 code. That is because we've been renting a front-end loader to remove snow and operate basically for the four months, five months of the year at $20,000 a month, a year. I can lease one for five years for $46,000, $46,000, and at the end of five years, we own it. We usually keep these big equipments for about 20 years, so basically, 10 years, we have it paid for, and, you know, and there'll be no cost after that, just to maintain it. The second item is a New York State mandated lead testing program that has to be done this year, this upcoming year. Now, we add about $50,000 to the budget, and that's just for sampling of water. BOSI's comes in, that's part of our BOSI's aid, they come in and do the sampling, they take the water samples, but it has to go to a lab to be tested, and that's $50,000 to do the testing on it. That's every five years. Ongoing look ahead, we worked with the visitation committee pretty much throughout the whole year. We've came up with a couple of different ideas. That's the first one, which would be the building improvements, and they're broken out. We're doing security front lobby at the high school. We're doing the glass partitions in the high school library to break it out into two rooms. Middle school, we're doing the pool refinishing, and the girls' locker, lockers are going to be placed in the pool area. North Main, we're continuing doing flooring. That hasn't been done in 25 years, so we'll continue grabbing that. Pine Tree, we're doing lights for the stage, and we're going to put a solar light out by the entrance. There's no light entrance to come into that building. Instead of digging all lines up, we put a solar, like I did at Smith Clover and North Main, it's a solar standalone power. It doesn't cost anything once it's in. CV, we're going to redo the gym, continue doing the gyms. And Smith Clover, we're going to do the rug library replacement, and then they're going to get new furniture with that. So that's, that's our whole budget right there. And that's pretty much it.
Have we budgeted, or do we have enough chemicals to clean? I mean, right now, we're on an...
We do, we keep ordering. We keep ordering. We do keep ordering. We have money in the budget to keep ordering. The problem is that, and I was at a meeting today, and it's not even New York State, it's throughout the country, you just can't get the chemicals. And we have three, four different vendors that we're pulling from, and they say, as it comes in, they'll give us instructions, we have to give them to everybody.
But I'm just saying, we have a number in mind for, we're cognizant of a number that this is going to impact us going forward, that maybe we're buying stuff that we didn't, we didn't budget the money for.
Of course, we did budget the money for.
Going forward, just we had money in the budget.
I think that that, things come up, and that's why we have contingencies in our budget for certain things.
Just want to make sure, in that budget, we think that there's $20,000 in chemicals, and we do have the 20,000, not that we only have 10. I just wanted to keep that in mind.
My understanding of state of emergency, we can also use a separate fund to pay for cleaning materials.
Do, without PO, it's a start rate, but you have to catch up eventually, they're saying.
And is there any, I mean, I know this is so early, but did the state, is there any buzz in the state saying that possibly all this sanitizing and stuff that will be maybe in line, I'm, maybe it's a one-year line, and have added to the state to get some money out?
They're going to the opposite direction.
I'm just asking if there's anything...
I haven't heard anything like that, that there'd be some sort of reimbursement or aid associated with containment of this.
When you declare a state of emergency, part of the state of emergency is for school districts for cleaning, that there's money set aside to offset the additional cost of cleaning.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we're aware of that, so we're looking, so we keep a tally of what we spent, and maybe we could...
Okay, great.
Yeah, there's about 30 million in the fund right now, but it's for, it's for a lot of things, not just that.
And I think that we've had a relatively mild winter.
Yeah, very mild.
Right? So that also offsets for us, you know, we've been cleaning the buildings, we've been doing a very good deep cleaning, and we'll continue to do that in the weekends to come, but we've been able to offset some of the costs because we haven't had the winter that we should have had.
I don't want to all say, "Use our money if there's a vehicle out there for us to gain the money back on their dime instead of ours."
If there is money that we are entitled to, we will certainly make sure that we get that money.
We absolutely will. As Elsie said, there's snow removal in the budget, which we haven't used. There's energy, right? Oil, natural gas, which we haven't used because it's been mild. So, I mean, that's the nature of budgeting. You're never right on everything, but you hope that your ups and your downs offset each other over time, and they generally do.
And there's no issue of moving those lines over to those items that we need?
No, there's no, I mean, the only issue with budget transfers is over $35,000, we have the board approve that, so.
To your point of, I mean, your team does a great job of maintenance and not only cleaning, but maintaining some facilities that have, that are very, that are very old. It's like, you know, and with capital outlay projects, it's like a, it's like a car, you're thinking, you know, "I'm now spending X amount of money just to keep this thing going. Sooner or later, you're going to have to get a new car when you sort of figure your outlay is warrants, something new." So I'm just saying, we're, in the next number of years, we'll probably be having capital projects that will, you know, cost something, but reduce costs of O and M.
That's part of what we discussed at our visitation, and Peter and Andre have told us that it's basically, there's certain pieces of equipment that we have that they no longer make the parts for. So that's, you know, they're working with that, that'll be part of a capital project to have to replace those items.
Yeah, our newest building is actually 20 years old.
Right.
I can't get parts for my Pinto anymore.
Peter, where did you say we're putting in another solar light?
We're going to put a solar light at Pine Tree, front entrance. There's no light out there, so it's very dark out there. So this will just increase the light out there. We're also looking at solar power. Eventually, hopefully, we're talking to NIPR, we're also talking to Connet Solutions to get ideas where to go and preliminary talks.
I mean, about a solar project, and Peter had up there, energy performance contract, that's another way to both save energy and save money with, you know, capital investments in your facilities.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Rodriguez, cabinet members, colleagues, and the Monroe Woodbury community. Thank you for the opportunity to give you a brief update on the 2020-21 budget proposed request for security and safety. If you notice, the code is remaining consistent in the equipment line. It received a significant increase the year before last, and this year, we did a lot of good things with the money in that code. We significantly expanded the cameras district-wide, especially at the middle school, and we're right on course to do other things with the proposed budget. We're looking to do access control upgrades at the seven school buildings and three support areas to network-based access control, which falls into the bigger picture of things. The systems that are currently there, we put in right after the tragedy in Sandy Hook in 2012, and after careful review and consideration, and I'd like to thank Bargav for all his support and assistance with dealing with these different vendors. We're really smart shoppers. I mean, a lot of people are selling a lot of products. So after consideration, we're finally there, and we're looking to hopefully get this, these access control systems upgraded. With the additional monies that we would have, we would continue with our camera expansion. The cameras that are currently in the high school are old IP cameras, I'm sorry, analog cameras. We would upgrade those to IP cameras, and we would additionally expand over to the elementary schools, which need cameras as well. Another slight increase was in our uniform services. There's an uptick in safety officer needs and equipment related to school safety officers, so we bumped that up a little bit. And in the professional fees code, that was associated with just cost of living expenses associated with the school resource officer program. Anybody have any questions?
Are we still looking into those alarms in the bathrooms for vaping?
For the vaping.
The vaping alarms?
We have. We have looked at two companies, FlySense and Halo. I was just up at the Middletown School District a couple of weeks ago. Bargav and I have been talking about it. There are a lot of money, there's a lot of misinformation on them, on how effective they really are. They're about $1,000 a pop, some bathrooms require two or three. It's hit or miss, you know? We've ramped up our inspections in our bathrooms to deter vaping and illegal use of drugs, and we find, and I feel, that that's been a better approach, but we continue to look at it. It's a, it would be a big cost. We're trying to see if we can pilot one, and we'll bring more information back to the board at a later date on that.
This technology is not mature yet, so it's worth it to keep looking. I would say another 12 to 18 months, I think we will have a couple of good vendors that will give us better return on the investment.
Are these vaping devices something that would be hot-wired?
Yes, hello?
And?
Good.
Oh, go ahead. That's okay.
It's both. It's hard-wire or wireless. We are looking at the wireless solution because hard-wire is very expensive. So we will be looking at that. Right now, we are keeping an eye on a couple of vendors. There are a couple of school districts that have used or started using it, but data is not that positive.
Okay.
So it's not worth it to invest our money yet into that, but I would say next 12 to 18 months.
And I had a conversation with a representative that we work for, IntraLogic, and they were very honest. They said, "Look, we can sell you this product, but it still doesn't do what it's supposed to do, and we're still not there." So I was very grateful that they were honest, and they said, "Look, as soon as we get a product that we really can put our name, you know, our name behind it, they would let us pilot it." So I think that might be a better route. Let's pilot it first and see how useful it is before the district invests dollars into that.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Hi, everyone. I'm happy to be here this evening to go over the preliminary 2020-21 transportation budget we threw this evening. So we'll start out with the bus proposition, which is better known as Prop 2, and this year, we are budgeted for $1,9,896. It's a little bit less than we budgeted last year. That will include six large buses, 72 children capacity. One of them would have an undercarriage storage compartment, two vans that are 29-passenger, and one wheelchair-accessible van. And of course, that's in keeping with our replacement program. The buses that we will retire as a result of being able to purchase these new vehicles, those buses have traveled a minimum of 1.1 mile, 1.1 million miles so far, so they're ready to be retired. Included in... Included in our garage building budget, we included this year, this is a polar snowblower system to remove snow from the tops of the buses. If you remember last year, we did put in a snow removal system. It was more like a scraper rather than a blower, so that was taken out of the budget before it went final last year, and so we had time to do more research, and we spoke to Peter Braga, it's another large bus company in Rockland County. They happen to own one of these, you won't see them very many places, they're made in Canada, nobody knows better than the Canadians on how to remove snow, I think. But they are thrilled, they have zero regrets, they love it. They have a generation one, it blows 145 mile-per-hour winds, this one would blow 190 mile-an-hour winds, and, you know, our goal would be to reduce the number of labor hours, and which would increase efficiency, and then, of course, it would reduce the chance of people getting hurt because currently, you know, we are standing on snow, OSHA-approved stands, and we're pulling snow off manually, so. And then, so this pie chart depicts the four main categories of this budget. This does not include payroll, which is, I just discussed with you, the proposition to the bus purchases, which is slightly lower, 5.88% from last year. Our Code 5510, which is our general operation budget, that's up very slightly from last year, 1.78%, and that's basically due to the increased cost of auto parts and the steel that, you know, is involved in purchasing the auto parts, and a very slight increase due to our cloud-based programs. We're thrilled to have them, but they, you know, there, there is an expense associated to them, right? So, they cost more, but we'll be in a good place if we need to use them. Then we have the garage building code, which is down from, you know, less 3.43% from last year. And then, the biggest portion of the budget is our 5540 code, which is our out-of-district transportation, and it also includes our non-public transportation, mostly the KJ area, and a very small portion is the contracted busing that we've been using to, to help us supplement us through the driver shortage for interscholastic athletics. This is up 44.61%. We've seen a tremendous growth in our, in our non-public students who are moving in in the KJ area. When I reported to you with our budget back in 1819, we had approximately 485 students that we were transporting through contract transportation, and now that number is up to closer to 800. There are over 900 that are actually registered, over 100 that didn't apply on by the April 1st deadline, so they would not be eligible, but they might be eligible this year. And then we have the anticipated growth due to the Smith Farm property that you'll see on Gilbert Street by Shopright and the Woodbury Junction area. So, we have building and going, the students that are attending KJ area schools that are in the Monroe area, over closer towards the bus badge, et cetera. So, you know, the contractor this year has decided not to extend our contract. So, at this time, normally what we would do is we would anticipate approximately how many buses we might need, and then we would add the CPI, because that would be our agreement, to extend the current contracted CPI. But because the contractor is no longer interested in extending the contract, we are going out to a new bid, so we really don't know at this point, you know, what, what those bid results will be. The business office has been working with me to really tighten up and tweak the existing bid that we had from back in 1516, when we first started using a contractor for those area schools, and we'll be ready to go out to bid with that in about a week or less. So, so we have that. And then, the part of the Boce's Coser Transportation, that is our students that are, attend out-of, out-of county schools, and we've seen, seen an increase in students attending those programs. For example, last year, we, we shared 26 routes within the Boce's Coser with other school districts. This year, currently, we're up to about 31 shared routes. Well, they're not all shared, where there are 31 routes, a majority, with the exception of maybe five, are shared with at least one district, some are shared with three districts. So, that's, you know, we're only paying thirds. So, that's why it's always a good idea to do that sharing whenever you can, so that you could take advantage of that. And also, in the, in the 5540-469 contract code, there was $200,000 set aside for supplemental busing again this year for athletes, and, but what we were able to do was we were able to reduce the interscholastic payroll budget, which you don't see here tonight, but we were able to reduce that, as well as some money from the, our gas and diesel code, and the, it was one other code, I'm sorry. And, yeah, so we were able to reduce three codes, so that it equaled the $200,000 that we were, we had to provide in the right budget code for, for those, for that transportation. So, it was, oh, yeah, the bus replace, in, in the bus replacement code, we had a reduction there, too. So, so overall, our budget is up 19.878%, and again, it's mostly due to the increase of 44% in the contract transportation code that you see right here.
Questions?
I have two. So, the first question is, when we have instances where our interscholastic teams are using booster money to pay for busing, that is a savings for us, correct, in our district budget? So, is that offset a little bit that we've had a couple of teams that aren't using school buses to go to their interscholastic activities, they're using charter buses?
No, it's, it doesn't really offset the budget, because historically, and we are in discussions about how we're gonna handle this going forward, the team contacts us, or athletic director, or their office, contacts us, and requests a quote for what it would cost to take a school bus to that event. And we quote them for a school bus, and the driver, the tolls, the meals, and everything associated, and then they only pay the difference between what it costs for if they took a school bus, and the difference between that and the contract bus.
And the charter bus.
That's where, so it's really not a savings, because we're still, that same amount of money is still coming out of our budget code, but they're paying for the luxury of the bigger bus, or, you know, or the, you know, bathroom, because it's a really long.
The extra, right, okay. And then the other one is, what was the reasoning that they're not renewing our, renewing the contract with us?
Well, this company was purchased by another company back in 2018, and they had agreed at that time to, to extend the contract, kind of going and not knowing, you know, and they've just made a decision that it's not lucrative for them to continue. So, they just, you know, I was grateful that they would at least get us to the end of this school year.
And I think what happens typically is, it's, it's almost like they want to renegotiate, because as Dawn said, the way state law works is they can only increase up to the price index, right, if they want to renew that contract. So, if it's economically, it's not working out for them, they say, we're not gonna renew, you're gonna have to go out to bid and let the chips fall where they may.
Okay, CPI has been ultra-low.
That's right.
You know, so they're, you know.
Okay.
But, but we are reaching out to as many vendors as we possibly can, anybody that we know or know is a reputable contractor, so we really want, you know, we want to have good bid results on this, so we're reaching out.
You said the overall percentage change was 19%?
Of the whole, of that, of the whole pie chart that you just, but in that one budget code alone.
Okay, because the.
Right.
Transportation is increased by 26%, according to this, what I'm looking at. Right? Am I seeing?
Some increase, some, some.
Right, most of these, I mean, I went by the budget sheet, you know, that we had, the totals that we, hopefully, we, you know.
The range is right.
Yeah.
I think she's right.
All right.
This one, this one right here. This one is hot off the press.
Yeah, it's, it's.
See, because we take the buses, we take the buses out, and then, that's, I think that's what you're saying. So, we add, we put the buses in, and then we take them out, we put them in a capital code.
Gotcha.
So, you know, like you have to add them back in.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing with that is, it's a little unusual, but we've, we've done that as long as I've been here, and what we, what we attempt to do is, at the end of the year, if we have sufficient surplus monies, we, we buy the buses with cash rather than issuing bands or notes. The, you know, in other words, in other, instead of borrowing, we just pay for them with cash and save the.
Don't we get some percentage back also on some of the, on the buses that, so do we have that number that we, what we plan on?
Do you mean a state aid associated with the bus purchases?
Well, with the bus purchases or the buses that you will not use?
Oh, yeah, well, we go up to public surplus, you know, they, you know, we generally, we generally get about $3,000 for a bus, because it's not like back, you know, when you replace things at 10 years old. Now, we're using buses, you know, 13, 14 years, and so, the miles are high, they do go to other countries, and they're happy to utilize them there. But here, as far as, you know, the money that you get back on public surplus is probably
Small money.
About three, actually, you get more money when you surplus vans, the old vans, because they're, you can use them for more. People will use them for anything from, you know, anything.
Pickup truck.
Yeah.
Tailgating.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bargav.
I won't say it. I'm gonna trouble.
Uh-oh, he's plugging in.
Good evening, Board of Education, this is Rodriguez, my colleagues, and administrators, and students in the audience. This is a preliminary budget presentation for Department of Information Services. This is truly the collaborative budget, working with students, staff, teachers, department chairs, administrators, principals, including the board members. So, this gives us the opportunity to present what we are excited about for the next year, and what we are looking for next two to five years as well. Some of the new technology initiatives that we are very excited about is, is Active Floor. Active Floor is basically an interactive floor that allows our students to, to basically learn in a playful environment. This will be actually installed at the K1 buildings. We are looking at the Sapphire to install in the, right by the main entrance, by the main bus entrance, when the kids walk in from the other side, and in the Smith Club, we are looking actually to add this in the library. So, this is another interesting, exciting project. We're looking at the expanding of a drone. Currently, we use our drone as a unit lesson in the middle school. We are looking at the company that has made the drone that are good for internal use, and actually allow our students to learn the block coding in fourth and fifth grade. So, currently, we use the block coding software called Scratch in two to five buildings. This will building the skills of the block coding for our elementary school kids, so when they go to the middle school, they will be actually better prepared to learn a little higher level of classes. Active, Virtual Reality, this, this initiative is currently used at the middle school. Last year, we, this was our new initiative, and we are actually working with our phenomenal librarian, Laura Lerner. So, in this picture, she's actually working with the students on exploring World War II as, as a lesson. So, the kids actually can put this unit on, and they can truly experience as if they are in that unit. We are expanding that, this, this whole concept of virtual reality and augmented reality to high school next year. Active Learning Spaces, this is another new initiative that we are currently working with the middle school. We have a couple of classrooms as a pilot classroom, and, and what this does, it allows our students and teachers to truly collaborate and interact in a, in a very flexible environment. There are a lot of studies nowadays that's shown that the kids don't learn in a rows and columns sitting environment. It is very hard for a lot of us and kids to, to just sit, like I have standing there just for like last 10 years. I can't just sit for more than 45 minutes an hour, unless it's cabinet meeting. But this will be exciting for us down the road, and, and ultimately, we want to pilot with the, with a couple of classrooms, get the teachers excited, and ask for the, more teachers to be a part of this pilot in next two to five years. Some other initiatives, so library upgrade that, that became to you last year, well, two years now, two years before we started working with each build, each, each school library. First was Smith Sapphire, last year it was North Main, next year we are expanding to the Smith Club, working with the librarian and Smith Club principal and assistant principal. We are, we have a proposal together, and we are looking to convert completely different, exciting K1 library, and, and, and it will be really, really amazing for the students and staff to experience the new library in a completely new environment. The other new initiative that we are working with Dr., through Dr. Morales's funding source, or the grants, should say, is adding the 3D printers in a two to 12 school buildings. We do have currently the 3D printing in the technology wing, in the middle school and high school. We are looking to add, actually, North Main as well, we are looking to add in other two buildings. This allow our students to work, and basically inspiring the creativity and design, including some of the STEM curriculum in the, in the process. Another big project that we are currently working is smart panels. Our current smart boards are average about eight to 10 years old, and it's kind of the old technology. So, we are, we are, this year, we had about a few, 45 panels. We are exp, we are expanding that to the next year in all K12 buildings. So, libraries that, as I said earlier, this is really a hub, and it's a common space for students and staff to work on, on. So, we want to make sure our libraries are so vibrant that helps and attracts our students to come into the library and, and basically collaborate with the students, not just become a, oh, I need to go to borrow the book from the library. And that's truly the, the spirit of the process that we want to, to move forward in. So, next year is Smith Club, and following year will be the Pine Tree. Another interesting and exciting project that we are, we will be working is data privacy and cybersecurity. So, so as a state, on, on January 29, earlier this year, state adopted a cybersecurity framework. It's basically the NIST cybersecurity framework, it's, it's, NIST is for National Institute of Standards and Technology. This is the organization that sets the standards for, for the required framework for all the school districts. So, now, we are required to follow a specific type of the cybersecurity framework that allow us to be a little bit more secure, and help us to be more prepared for any issues or, or some other disaster down the road coming. This allows also us to protect the student and staff data as well. In the beginning of last, last spring, we did some NIST assessment work, and then we will be actually implementing, starting in this summer. Just to give you the idea that this is a part of the Educational Law 2D, another unfunded mandate, as part 121 requirement. There are like nine different requirements, and the bullet, the, the box in the green, we have completed the requirements, the box in the, in the green, yellow, we are looking, we actually have a work in progress, and the boxes of the information in the red, we will be working during the summer program. Just to give you the idea, the whole NIST cybersecurity framework, it has a five different categories, and each five, five functions, and each function has a various subcategories, so it's total 21 categories, and total 21 categories and hundreds of categories. This is more about protecting the personally identifiable information. So, we have, we started working with specific vendors who has the niche or has an experience working in the NIST assessment, and ultimately creating the NIST compliance for our school district. So, for, about four years before, we as a school district applied for a Smart School Fund, a Smart School Fund, it's about four and a half million dollar, and, and it took about two years to get the approval from the state. So, last 18 months, we're working very diligently with upgrading our backend infrastructure that many people would not see. So, the pictures on the left side is the, the original infrastructure that we have, you know, we had in our school district, and yes, you can see that the server racks were placed on the floor, or on the shelves on the building on the side, or, or wherever they find a place. Now, the right side is the appropriate picture. So, this is the, the server rack in the middle school. So, basically, it allowed us to create a strong infrastructure that creates the backbone of a really good instruction and utilization of technology into the curriculum. The preliminary technology recommendations, so we have The preliminary technology recommendations, so we have, I have, we have four codes, data processing, that, that actually is up at almost eight, 19%. The, the reason that that code is up is that we have purchased, or we are planning to purchase, we have purchased some and we are planning to purchase some more cybersecurity products that makes us actually better secure. We have implemented the, the three different Cisco products, Cisco AMP and Cisco Umbrella and Cisco email security that allow us to be functioning as a school district in a much secure environment. And then that, those products are very expensive to, to work. But now, it's almost like, now, it's a regulation. So, it's not that we have a choice but to use those products. Computer literacy, that, that line is up about 6%. This includes the, this includes some of the smart panels and a Chromebook rollout. As a district, we have about 40, 49, 4,800 plus Chromebooks. And for a student, usually, we have about 4,000 plus Chromebooks. We are looking to expand and add more Chromebooks. So, we are getting, the goal eventually is to go to one-to-one. We have, we have not made a decision of allowing to take a device at home versus keeping the device at, at, in the building. The central printing, this is another interesting success story. So, about three years before, we implemented the, the ID badge authentication. So, if you want to print something on our big copier machines, you have to authenticate yourself. And, and basically, it allows you to, to, to print your, print your print jobs. What it did though, culturally, it shifted the culture and created the mindset for all the end users to saying, do I really need to print this? And also, if I print the version one of this presentation and by the end of an hour or two, I made a changes, now I can go up and only retrieve the version that I need. And the, all the other unprinted job would automatically disappear from the server at the end of the day. So, it's a significant saving for us. It's about $20,000 saving, a 20% saving that we'll be actually putting into the different code. Library media, that's pretty much stayed very stable. It's actually a 0.14% decrease that allows us to buy the, the eBooks, the library media supplies, AV supplies. So, the technology in general in the district, and we consider each, each device as an asset. So, we have, this is a distribution of the assets. This does not include the assets that we have in like the servers or the switches. So, it's about 8,800, 8,800 plus assets. And if I add the other servers and everything else, it's about almost tech, close to 10,000 technology assets. So, it's a big network. And thanks to the amazing technology department team that, that I represent, it's, it's really, really good and we manage it overall very well. The computer trouble tickets, this, this actually created the accountability for us and we track, pretty much, we tell everybody, open a school, open a ticket and then we can actually go and take care of the trouble or any computer-related issues. So, this is just the, the, the chart of how the tickets are, are throughout the, throughout the school year. As it, it's actually very low in September because we had a whole cyber disaster. Then we came on the, on the October. So, virtually, nobody was able to use.
Shut down.
And then we got it in October.
And we paid the price in October. But it's, what it does, it creates the accountability for all of us internally in the technology department. It allows us to provide a better customer service to our students and teachers. And actually, I have a short 60-second video and then I'm done. Oh.
Very cool. That's great. Maybe a little spin up?
Yeah.
Right?
Any questions?
Bargo, I have a question. Not specifically related to the proposed budget, but you talked about the 3D printing and then I just see it now in the video. Have all the security issues been resolved with respect to the internet connectivity with the 3D printing at the middle school and the high school?
Yes, yes. So, in the beginning, there were some concerns and, and issues. So, what happened was the side effect of blocking the USB. We were able to figure out the workaround and now they are all connect, able to connect it and print it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bargo. Thank you, all of the presenters for the, the various aspects of the budget. I'd like to take a five-minute break before we continue the rest of the, the meeting. Students can get their papers signed for government class.
Yeah, yeah.
So, five-minute break. Thank you. The March 11 regular meeting of the Board of Education, after a short break, no board business was conducted. Do I have a motion to accept a resolution establishing May 19, 2020, is the date of the annual budget vote and election?
Motion.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carried. Do we have a motion to accept a resolution approving the legal notice related to the budget hearing and annual budget vote and election?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carried. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 26, 2020, regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carried. Do we have a second reading of the policy manual updates? You want to just go over those briefly?
I think Stacy explained them last time.
Yes, yes.
Relationship with boosters and booster organizations and the role of the extra classroom activity. Those will go in and then, that's it. Monday, we have another policy meeting. I'm gonna roll right into the next part for a second. Monday, we have another policy meeting. We have two more things in this realm we're looking at. And then we're looking at three or four more that NISBA has said that we just need to make sure that complies with theirs. So, that'll be Monday.
All those in favor of the second reading?
Aye.
We didn't move? Didn't move? Motion to approve the second reading of the following policy manual updates.
Motion.
Second.
Motion. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carried. Reports by Board of Education committees. You just mentioned the policy. Do we have Orange County School Boards and Visitation Committee, Dawn?
Particularly, Orange County School Board Association. We, we had a presentation about students and their, their writer-free speech and the Tinker decision and how it relates to some of the most recent cases. And then we had an overview of the Orange Ulster Bosse's and a coronavirus update, which probably is moot a week later. So, that's it. And Visitation, we will be visiting Central Valley next Tuesday?
Thank you. Dawn, Facilities?
I don't know if Patrick has any new information on this.
I, I don't think there's anything earth-shattering. We, we continue to follow up on punchless items with the capital project, the synthetic turf field project. There, there are a few items that we will be moving forward on related to the, the turf field project out of the general fund. So, one of those is, and I mentioned this, I think, previously, a connector ramp or pathway from the stadium field up to the upper field. And what we're dealing with now is how to configure that so it would work both for pedestrians and the cross-country team and course. And so, there's a couple of options. We're trying to find the best way forward on that one. There's some fencing. There's actually a fencing bid that we're approving tonight under Business Financial and that's related to some additional fencing in and around the field as well. So, that's it.
Right. We do not have a, a formal report by student representative Maeve Harrington, just later on, a, a mention of something. Personnel. Matt?
Good evening. Before, I'm gonna be asking for permission for approval for the items listed under Personnel. One of the things I just want to point out is, there is a supplemental memorandum of agreement. It's item 17.14. And that is an agreement between the district and the MWTA regarding a new special education certification. So, very quickly, for years, our secondary special education teachers have been certified using one of three certifications, either a K through 12 certification, which was back in the, the old school days, a seven through 12 certification, or a five through nine generalist special ed certification. We've been hiring many teachers, or special ed teachers at the secondary level who are also certified in, duly certified in a content area as well. Back in No Child Left Behind times, back in the early 2000s, the law was, you have to have a special ed teacher who is a content area specialist as well. But they didn't have that content area certification. So, as a local district, we were able to basically give people certification or voucher for people that they were cert, they were certifiable, in particular, content areas based on, based on their.
I was certified.
I didn't want to say that because.
You were certified.
I was gonna say, don't use the word was, Jim.
You are.
Yeah. So, I'm gonna be asking for approval of certain things, so I figured I wouldn't point that out, but I appreciate that. So, we, so basically, because there were content areas, the district said, look, if you, we can voucher you that you were a content area specialist based on your experience, either at the college level or the graduate level or in the classroom. Once we had the Every Student Succeeds Act, which has come out, more recently, they've said everyone who's a special ed certification or holds that certification and is not duly certified in a particular content area, they now have one, they also have to be duly certified. So, New York State, in their, their wisdom, has kind of said, there's a one-shot deal for all these special education teachers to get certified in, in a particular content area. So, what they have to do is, they have to apply to New York State. Initially, it was $100 per certification, depending on the content areas. They need three years of experience in a particular content area. So, if I'm a special education teacher and along the way, I taught an English class that was, that I was allowed to do, if I did three of those, I would qualify to, in order to get this, this new certification. They have to take one of the, they have to take up to four workshops. Every news, every time you apply for a new certification, you have to make sure you have four workshops. There's the DASSA workshop, an autism workshop, a, a school violence and prevention workshop, and a child abuse workshop. So, everyone who's getting newly certified needs those. We also have teachers who were hired before 2004, and this is in every district throughout New York State, who have not been fingerprinted. So, with that, they have, since it's a new application for certification, they now need to be fingerprinted. So, what it does is, basically, teachers have the choice as to whether or not they're gonna do this. We can't mandate that they get, that they have, you know, become certified in this area. They want to be certified and we want them to be certified. So, the memorandum of agreement is that we would basically cover the cost for the certification. We currently have 10 teachers who this would impact. The cost of the certification is $100 for, for each of them. And the, the cost of the workshops are either online or free through our Bosse's. We've been doing that. And then there are, I think, two of them who need to get their fingerprinting. So, you're talking about $1,200 to $1,400 would be the, the cost to do this. So, with that, I would ask for.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I have a question.
Great.
You said the teacher would have, have taught three of those classes or?
Three years.
Three years.
So, we'll have teachers, just so you know, we'll have teachers who will get, you know, SOS is the, the acronym, but who will get SOSed in multiple areas. So, we have one teacher who's taught at least one class in four different areas. She's gonna get four new certifications. We have some, we're gonna get two or three. So, with the 10 people, we're gonna end up with 18 new certification areas. So, if I'm a high school principal or a middle school principal and I have a need to put somebody in, you know, as an English special ed teacher or a biology special ed teacher, the areas are the, the three sciences, bio, chem, physics, plus the general science, which is seventh and eighth, math, English language arts, social studies.
You want a second?
Second.
Any more questions?
So, this just make it easier for us to place. We're not gonna have to go out and get a specialized body.
Right. We're still gonna, as we hire.
We're gonna be able to fill within, is what I mean.
Correct. And as we hire, we'll still.
We had to hire somebody specific for the cause.
Right. And we'll still look to hire those people who are duly certified, but this will certainly help.
It'll still help. It'll help out.
Absolutely.
I actually had a question and I wanted to refer back to what you had. I'm sorry. You were talking about facilities and you were just talking about special ed. So, I, and you mentioned about, you know, the turf field and stuff. It just triggered. There was a playground that you guys put, put in a playground over in Central Valley, correct?
Correct.
Do we have any sensory playgrounds in the future plans?
I, I don't think so at this point, but that's something we certainly could consider as.
Certainly something we would consider. It's a real good idea. It helps in a whole lot of areas, cognitively and so many levels.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All those in favor of Personnel?
Aye.
So, carried. Patrick, Business and Financial?
Yes, I would respectfully ask for the approval of the items in the Business and Financial section of the agenda, John, which include our monthly financial reports for January, a donation from Assemblyman Colin J. Schmidt for $1,500 to the MW Cares Day Program. So, we appreciate that very much and that support of MW Cares from Assemblyman Schmidt.
Great.
A, let's see, two contracts for your approval, Declaration of Obsolete Items Technology Assets, relatively small capital project change order related to Smart School Bond Act, additional drops, wire drops, approval of the bid that I mentioned earlier for fencing and a budget transfer for your approval to provide for some electrical upgrades at the MCC.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, we'll have a motion? Just, I'll get you. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Question?
Well, maybe it's more of a clarification, but on the MW Cares donation from Colin Schmidt, past practice was, and specifically on September 26 of 18, when this was presented to the Board for Approval, it came from the high school principal as a direct request to allocate those funds towards the MW Cares speakers for the day. I don't see that accompanying documentation here because this looks like it was generated from the business office. Is that the same? Are we following that? Are those funds specifically allocated to that?
I, I think it would. It would be the same. We, we would, we would accept this. It would increase the appropriations in whatever area we needed it to be. So, if it's speakers, then that would be the, the budget vote for that expense.
Well, I don't know if it'd be increasing the, I mean, it's a direct donation to the program, right? So, that's gonna be clearly marked somewhere.
It would reduce 1,500 from somewhere.
I don't want to reduce what we have.
No, no. What I'm saying is, it would, it would increase the budget, the general fund budget, which is what, you know, accepting a donation does. And then that would enable us to expand those monies, you know, more than what would normally be budgeted.
Okay. It just doesn't have that, you know, specific.
I, I think what we need to do is, is clarify going forward, right, as we're gonna have another MW Cares Day, how certain, you know, donations would be handled, if they go through the high school and the extra classroom fund towards the general fund. Because originally, the way this was laid out is there was support from the general fund, a certain amount of money, I think it was $50,000.
I actually had a question, and I wanted to refer back to you, Pat. I'm sorry. You were talking about facilities and you were just talking about special ed. So, I, and you mentioned about, you know, the turf field and stuff. It just triggered. There was a playground that you guys put, put in a playground over in Central Valley, correct?
Correct.
Do we have any sensory playgrounds in the future plans?
I don't think so at this point, but that's something we certainly could consider as part of...
Certainly something we would consider.
It's a real good idea. It helps in a whole lot of areas, cognitively and so many levels. Thank you.
All those in favor of Personnel?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carried. Patrick, Business and Financial?
Yes, I would respectfully ask for the approval of the items under the Business and Financial section of the agenda, John, which include our monthly financial reports for January, a donation from Assemblyman Colin J. Schmidt for $1,500 to the MW Care Day program. So, we appreciate that very much and that support of MW cares from Assemblyman Schmidt.
Great.
A, let's see, two contracts for your approval, Declaration of Obsolete Items Technology Assets, relatively small capital project change order related to Smart School Bond Act, additional drops, wire drops, approval of the bid that I mentioned earlier for fencing, and a budget transfer for your approval to provide for some electrical upgrades at the MCC.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah, we'll have a motion. Just, I'll get to you. Motion? Second. Second. Question?
Well, maybe it's more of a clarification, but on the MW cares donation from Colin Schmidt, past practice was specifically on September 26th of 18, when this was presented to the board for approval, it came from the high school principal as a direct request to allocate those funds towards the MW care speakers for the day. I don't see that accompanying documentation here because this looks like it was generated from the business office. Is that the same? Are we following that? Are those funds specifically allocated to that?
I think it would. It would be the same. We would, we would accept this. It would increase the appropriations in whatever area we needed it to be. So, if it's speakers, then that would be the budget vote for that expense.
Well, I don't know if it would be increasing the, I mean, it's a direct donation to the program, right? So, that's going to be clearly marked somewhere.
It would reduce $1,500 from...
So, I don't want to reduce what we have.
No, no. What I'm saying is it would, it would increase the budget, the general fund budget, which is what, you know, accepting a donation does. And then that would enable us to expand those monies, you know, more than what would normally be budgeted.
Okay. It just doesn't have that, you know, specific...
I think what we need to do is clarify going forward, right, as we're going to have another MW cares day, how certain, you know, donations would be handled if they go through the high school and the extra classroom fund towards the general fund. Because originally, the way this was laid out is there was support from the general fund, a certain amount of money, I think it was $50,000. And then it would be, that would be a supplement to the donations that would be collected.
But the red track donation...
So, I think it could, it could work either way because there's certain limitations on what we can do with general fund monies that, you know, we don't have those restrictions through the extra classroom.
No, I understand those restrictions. I'm just talking specifically about that donation. You know, there are subsequent donations that come in. If they could just be clearly marked as such, so that we know that that's where that they're...
Absolutely. I think we, you know, we should work on clarifying that in that process.
Thank you.
Is there documents for the MW cares funds? What was spent, what went out, what came in on donations, like for the BRICS, for any fundraisers that you do? Do you have any income and expenses? Any kind of a report?
Oh, yeah, of course. There's a, sure. But that's, that's student activity.
Through the extra, through the extra classroom fund.
It would, okay.
We'd have those records.
Okay.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Business and Financial. So, carried. Do I have a motion to approve the arrangement for the recommended placements made by the Committee of Special Education and Preschool Special Education Items Number 19.1.2.3.4? Motion. All those in favor? Opposed? So, carried. Reports by Board and Central Office. Chris?
Nothing. Just have a good night. Wash your hands, I guess. Hopefully, everyone will be in school in the next couple of weeks.
Dawn?
I think just a shout out to the cast and crew of Guys and Dolls. Middle School is a great show. Thank you for inviting me and have a good night.
Dawn?
Yeah, have a good night. I've been working with mostly Elsie last week. I'll work with the DOH and some of the other things. We seem to be making good progress. And wash your hands.
Suzanne?
I'd like to thank Patrick and his team and Peter and Dawn and Frank and Bargo for the budget presentations. Thank you very much. I know a lot of work goes into that. And I'd like to wish everyone a good evening and wash your hands.
Maeve?
Last night, I got the pleasure of attending Ms. Lepidus's fifth grade Socratic Cafe. And I thought that was a really great experience. They surprised me with how articulate and patient they were with each other and how they, you know, would just build off of what each other had to say. So, that was wonderful. And I wish good luck to all those trying out for spring sports this week.
Thank you. Donna?
I just wanted to remind people that if they're interested in running for the Board of Education, packets are available in my office. And if you haven't already registered to vote, please do so. And also wish John a happy upcoming birthday.
Bargo?
So, last week, I attended Olympic Parade at Pine Tree. It was nicely done by Mr. Judes and his team.
I'd like to begin by apologizing to the Board and to the Cabinet for the shaming that I did at the last Board of Education meeting as I was regrettably unable to attend the Wizards game myself. Sorry about that. However, it's not too late to begin preparations for next year's Wizards game. So...
I'm on it.
Maybe I didn't give enough preparation and notice, but here's 365 days. So, it's never too early to start preparing for next year. But thank you to everybody who attended. I heard it was still sad, the same outcome as the past 25 years, but it was a great, it was a great, it was a great fundraiser for Interact. Special Olympics Parade was awesome. Guys and Dolls was awesome. Congratulations. I went to the Odyssey of the Mind Tournament on Saturday morning to all of our Odyssey of the Mind teams that participated. In particular, congratulations to Team Blumberg. That is going to be advancing to the state Odyssey of the Mind Tournament from the high school. I was also at the North Main Science Fair last night, which was unbelievable. There was a young lady there from third grade who I think that she could pass the chemistry regions because she was off the charts. She did a project on science on acids and bases. It was unbelievable. Third grade. Spectacular. Thanks.
Patrick?
Just one minor thing. At the Crusader Chat a few weeks ago, a question was asked. It was actually by Mrs. Loaning over there. Ms., I'm sorry. And it was about the traffic signal on the intersection of Nininger and Dunderberg. It was actually a question about the DOT project. And, you know, essentially, it was, what's the status of that traffic signal? Why hasn't that been installed? Was it part of the arrangement that we had with the Department of Transportation? So, the answer is no. It wasn't part of the arrangement we had with them. I have called them subsequently. And so, those are county roads, and that is a county traffic signal. There isn't, I think, an intention to put that light in there, but we would have to reach out to the county, I guess Department of Public Works, to find out on the status, to find out about the status of that. I've also heard that there will be two potentially additional lights in that stretch of Nininger between 105 and Route 32. So, that's the update. It was a question that I was going to look into, so we've looked into it.
Get ready, Transportation Department.
I just said, yeah, good luck to Dawn.
If the light is set just right, it's really long at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock.
Okay. Matt?
Congratulations to all of our athletes, those who have won the section, those who are still in the state competition, those who won the state competitions. And I agree with Dawn. Guys and Dolls was great. So, thank you very much for listening.
All right.
So, I was going to go to the Wizards, and I asked Eric, who else on the board was going to play? And he said, nobody else signs up, so...
When do you ever know?
I was just going to say that. I was going to actually play, I swear to God.
You didn't see me play?
I didn't go. No, I didn't go because he said, no one signs up to play. So, this is going to be my first. So, my daughter represented instead, and she sold some stuff or whatever she did. I went somewhere else. Yes, congratulations. Ditto to the athletes. And I wanted to congratulate Jamie Caleb for winning the grand prize in the county poster contest for the Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Council. And I think that's really, and thank you for the presenters. You know, like I said last time, can't believe we're coming up on the budgets already. It's just, time just flies.
Thank you. Stacy?
Same. I want to thank all the presenters for the presentations tonight. And I want to give a shout out, same, to the middle school in regards to the play. It was, it was phenomenal again. And an extra special shout out to the fact that those students actually run the lighting system and the audio system on their own. So, kudos to them. Let's hope that they can get some better equipment next year. That's my little hint to Mr. Sano.
And Ms. Kara, who leads them.
Yes, exactly. So, they do an excellent job with the equipment they have, but they could warrant some new equipment. But a great show. So, congrats to them.
Anthony?
I had the opportunity yesterday to walk with Laurie and Elsie and the rest of the Cabinet to the opening of the fields. And it was a beautiful day. And I think Laurie estimated there was over 600 kids out there playing and practicing and trying out. So, it was just pretty cool to see something that we all had a hand in and all the kids enjoying it. So, I just want you guys to know that and have a great evening and wash your hands and bodies.
Elsie?
So, I am disappointed in Mr. Hasler, Dr. Hasler, because he always mentions everything, so I don't have to mention anything. It's very sad. So, I'm not going to mention, I, I am going to talk a little bit about the coronavirus and all of the talk that's going around town. This has been incredibly challenging for the district, the community, myself, my fellow colleagues across the county and across the straight state and obviously across the United States. We are getting information on an hourly basis. As I sat here, there was more documentation that just came out. And I received some concern from people saying that we have our first coronavirus in Orange County. That's not correct. The person actually lives in Ulster County, so it's not considered a case in Orange County. But at this time, and I say at this time because this is hourly, this could change in about an hour. We don't have a case, a confirmed case in Orange County. But I just wanted to explain to the community how I make my decisions. And unlike when we had the cyber attack, this is a coordinated relationship with several agencies. So, first, there's the governor. There's the Orange County Health Department. There's the New York State Health Department. There's the CDC. And then, because we're a school district, there's SED. And so, all of those agencies have to give us guidance. And sometimes, it takes a long time to kind of sift through the guidance. And to be honest, sometimes the guidance is conflicting. So, I just want to make sure that the community understands that we are reading everything, that we are doing everything in our power, that we're going to make decisions that are different than other school districts. For example, I, I heard from community members, why did Cornwall extend their vacation by four days? Why didn't you do that? And my response is, I don't have additional days. Remember, we close school for certain things that other school districts didn't do. We have, our teachers have a contract that they are to work 183 days. We're at 183 days. The other question that I got was, why are parent-teacher conferences not canceled at the high school? I have not been given guidance to cancel that. Again, that's at this moment in time. Everything can change. The other thing is, is that we've done, we've been working very hard to give our community members information that we know to be true. For example, on Friday, there were three letters that went out. A letter went out to our parents, a letter went out to our staff, a letter went out to our students. And then on Monday, we sent a letter to our local officials because if there was a reason for us to close, we would have to coordinate with all those people. In addition, people are asking me, why am I not closing school? I don't decide to close schools on my own. That is a directive from the Orange County Health Department. They will tell me if I have to do that. I don't arbitrarily choose to do that. So, I just want to make sure that people understand this is a fluid situation. I think somebody said, what I learned last week is different this week. And this is a day by day, sometimes an hour by hour. So, I ask for the community's patience. We are doing the best that we can. We're going to make decisions that are best for Monroe Woodbury, given the situation. And always, if there's questions, email us, call us. There are a lot of people that are working on this. But we are certainly going to make sure that whatever we know to be true, we will share with the community.
There's also the website, cdc.gov.
Thank you for saying, well, and we also developed, thank you for saying that. But we also took it upon ourselves to develop a very comprehensive website so parents can go back. Every time I send a link, it's to go back to the website so that you can take a look at what additional information they've given us.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. In the event, let's just say, you know, these schools are just closing, they're canceling, you know, some of these colleges just a couple of hours ago have canceled. They have to do their classes online. Let's just say that in two, three days, they say, you've got to close. Are we prepped?
I'm, I'm glad you asked that question. So, there's been a lot of discussion as what's going to happen to students once, if in fact, we close? Will you be doing online? The answer to that is no. We are not prepared to do online and simply because of the magnitude of our school district. But that's really almost any school district. What we are planning on doing is actually having resources for our students depending upon the course that they take. But that's work that we're going to do. We're, again, going to post it on our website. And finally, SED will tell us what we can do. So, that's really the guidance that I'm waiting for. And I think everybody is, everybody's anxiety has heightened because I'm not giving a direct response.